Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Monday, the 2nd of December 2019. This is the State and Community Center. And we are going to deal with an agenda for the State and City Council in its regular first-of-the-month meeting. So, would you take us through a flag salute this evening? I have trouble standing up, so it's better if someone else does this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution, one nation, under God, and in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Regarding the Parks and Recreation Board appointments, Richard Voez approached me, discussing this with me. I gave him no opinion one way or the other, and it won't affect my judgment on that vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anything else? Okay. I want to start with appointments this evening. And I would like to have the Council affirm my appointment of Ben McDonald to a vacant Council seat. And Richard Voez, David Nielsen, and Pam Pugsley, who is a reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. So, if the Council would confirm those...
We're doing well together.
It would please the dickens out of me.
Do you... I would do the Council appointment, and then the Parks Board, do two separate motions.
You want it in two motions?
Yeah.
She never tells me these things until it's too late. Good evening, Counselor.
Make it work.
So, I would entertain a motion. Yes.
I move that we appoint Ben McDonald to the vacant City Council appointment in accordance with your recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Under those, probably not discussion on that. Would you hold the Council on that, please?
Point of order.
Yes.
Pretty sure there's always discussion after a motion.
All right. You go ahead.
I'm just saying that...
Go ahead, if you want. Under discussion, please.
Well, I appreciate that you went with our... Well, I appreciate that you let us have a work session so that we could ask questions to the people that had applied. So, thank you very much for listening to the Council. I appreciate that.
I always listen. But most of the time. Some of the time. I've been known to listen, but thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion on the Council appointment? Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Support is zero.
Thank you, folks. Ben's here this evening. Ben, the staff will take it from here as far as lining you out on training and the correct political attitudes for this group and party affiliations and whatnot. So, they'll take care of all that. So, we don't need to do anything else. Congratulations, though, and welcome.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
And, okay, on the Parks and Recreation Board appointments, all three of those folks are well-known quantities and qualities in the city, long-term residents. And is there any discussion on those, please? Other than... Pam has been on the Parks and Rec Board for a long time, so that's a reappointment. So, I'd ask for a confirmation on those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we confirm your appointment of Richard Voez, David Nielsen, and Pam Pugsley to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, a second, please.
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Discussion. Is there any?
Just thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for serving.
You bet. Indeed. Could we go just a voice vote on that, or...
Yeah.
All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, we'll declare those folks appointed to the planning, or the Parks and Recreation Board. Okay. Here we go with... With, let's see, the staff is all here. Council's all here. We're in good shape. Here we go with public comments, in no particular order. Three minutes. Name and address, please. Use the mic. Mr. Grooms, Joseph Grooms.
I also have Sabrina, a neighbor, that's here. And she fell out of cards. She wanted to speak too on the same topic. And that is the... There's a section of property that runs, that borders the walking path, Wildflower, just behind the homes on Wildflower. I think you know that as Track A. And last summer, there was a major windstorm, and one of those cottonwoods came down into a neighbor's yard. Well, I went to the city, the Public Works Office, to try to get someone there to take care of it, or, you know, at least cut it up or something. And no one responded. So, myself and another homeowner, we got chainsaws and cut it up and everything. So, the biggest concern, I guess, is the property and to public safety. And I guess there's no... We don't know who owns that property. I think that's pretty much...
Let's dig around in that. Who owns that? Please.
I believe it's the Homeowner Association that owns that, and it's in the plat. And I just want to correct the gentleman here. I recall that. I didn't speak to him directly. But we didn't just blow them off. We let them know that that was not our property. So, our guys did not go out and cut that up. So, Homeowner Association that's owned that, if you read the plat, it's clearly... It's clear in there.
No, it's not. It's not... That's not true.
Well...
The Homeowner Association does not own that at all.
All right.
It's still owned by the developer. It's still beaded to the developer. So, that's pretty much where we stand. But it took me from 8:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon to get somebody to respond to that. We had kids playing on that tree. We had parents that were actually letting their kids go under the tree. And the thing weighed, what, a ton? We have pictures. You want to...
Is this something we need to...
So, I guess the tree came down. It was actually a Y-shaped at the base. So, it was two trees and one base. And one side of the tree broke loose. So, the other side is still there, and could be weakened by it, and it could be coming down. And that's the biggest concern. But it did. It took me from 8:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon to get somebody to respond. I called the police department. I called the City Planning Department. I actually went down to the Planning Department and talked to Michael, someone, and the woman that works in the office there, I can't remember her name, Lisa, somebody, I don't know. But I finally, I said, "Look, this is about public safety. It has nothing to do with ownership." You know, "We want to make sure people are safe. We don't want anybody to get hurt." So... And no one did. I even had three code enforcement officers at my house trying to figure out who it belonged to. And they're not sure who it belonged to. That was Christopher Camacho.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may have to dig around in this at some point on a public safety issue, if nothing And maybe deal with ownership somewhere along the line. Judy Mahoney. Judith K. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Judith K. Mahoney. 2110 East Pine Street. I'm just here to thank the city for having an open session so that we could hear your questions given to the people that wanted the Council seat. The sad thing I felt about the whole thing, there were only two people that attended. So, I'm really sorry that our public isn't paying attention to what's going on. It was very interesting. I learned a lot, and I think you made a great decision with that. And I also want to thank everybody in Stateon and the surrounding areas for preparing Thanksgiving dinners for those less fortunate than us. Myself and my husband and others helped, again this year, at the Covered Bridge. And let me tell you, that's a wonderful, wonderful experience to be able to see those who don't have family members, and they can come. They don't have to be homeless. So, we are a caring community, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a... I was looking through these for a minute and hoping that the main push behind that community Thanksgiving dinner was going to get up here and say something, but I may have to fore. Anyway, Sabrina Wagler. Sabrina.
I'm Sabrina Wagler, and I live behind the path with the tree that fell down. We were actually out of town, so this is the path behind Sandyham Park on Wildflower. And yes.
Sabrina, are you... You're at 2265 Wildflower?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And it did fall on our fence, so it did not get cleaned up by my husband for a while because we were out of town. Joe came over and helped us. Luckily, it just... Our fence actually was able to support it. But I am concerned about others coming down, and it would hit our house. The signs say that it is a wetland area, and it's protected. So, that's also another issue of, is anybody allowed to touch it? There are green signs placed. My husband does keep it trimmed along the path, past the chain link fence, just to keep it off the walking area. There are some recent marks on the concrete, which I was excited to see. It looks like it is spray painted around the roots from the cottonwood trees. So, I'm hoping that means the city or someone is going to be leveling it out and repaving that section. It looks like it by the marks. I'm not sure. It's probably been about a week since they've been there. But our main concern is that those trees might fall. And even if they were just topped or something, so they wouldn't be in danger of the houses. So...
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Janet Rutgers.
I am down at Rutgers. I lived on 1182 North Third Avenue for 58 years. Last Friday, I was walking on the sidewalk in front of the Judson Building, and there was a painter there, and people coming towards me. I was going north, and people were coming towards me, so I was over towards the curb. And the next thing I knew, I fell, and this is what happened. Broke my nose.
Oh, dear.
And I really think that we need to do something to these sidewalks downtown. The safety is not there anymore. Yeah, I guess it was still... I wasn't looking where I was going because I thought it was cement, and evidently they had filled it in with sand. So, I'm lucky I didn't break a wrist or whatever. I work at Harold's Jewelry, and that's where I was going back to.
Janet, a quick question. Was it in that area where that tree was recently taken out?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that once that tree was taken out of there, that had a... Should have been filled in either with concrete again or something. It just can't be soft. And I was also told there was a lady in a wheelchair a couple of weeks ago or whatever that got into that as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
And I mean, I know a lot of it is as a property owner, but it seems like the city and the property owners need to get together and try and get these things fixed.
Okay. All right.
I'm just lucky that I didn't get hurt any worse than I did. I just wanted to tell you that you need to think about all this.
Okay. Thank you, Janet.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you didn't get hurt any worse either, but...
Huh?
I'm glad you didn't get hurt any worse either.
Well...
But a broken nose, yeah, it's...
Yeah. But I was checked out by the doctor today because I didn't go right away. I felt I was okay. Nose was bleeding, but I don't have to wear eye makeup now.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wendy Stone.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Stone. I live at 525 North Myrtle Avenue in Stateon.
Right. Excuse me.
I'm the president of the Sandyham Heritage Foundation, and I'm here this evening to request the City Council's help. On June 4th, 2018, I came before this body to request help for, among other things, the money necessary to complete the change of use process we are going through with the city of Stateon and Marion County. At that time, the Council asked me to return when we had a clearer picture of exactly what we need. As this Council has many members who were not Council members at that time, I'll review some background. Nineteen years ago, Sandyham Heritage Foundation was formed and incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit by a group of concerned community members to save the Brown House from destruction. They felt Stateon had lost too many historic buildings, and they were determined not to lose this one, too. The house was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2002. The charter reads in part, "Once restored, the house will be available to the general public for meetings, weddings, receptions, exhibits, recitals, concerts, et cetera." The nomination to the National Register of Historic Places states in part, "The house is owned by the Sandyham Heritage Foundation, whose intent is to restore the building and make it available to the public as a social and historic interpretive center." SHF has now invested nearly 20 years and about $500,000 to save the house and property for the community to use for events. The first floor is essentially done, and I'm pleased to report we now have grant money available to complete the second floor. That will happen next year. The change of use process will fulfill the original founder's vision to make the house and grounds available to the public so people can make new memories there. We believe in the vision of the original Board of Trustees. We have also collaborated with Revitalized Downtown Stateon for the wildly popular Ghost Tour and Chocolate Walk, and plans are to make it an annual event. We believe the Brown House can contribute to the economic vitality of Stateon's downtown. Support for the Brown House is in line with the Council's identified goal of supporting economic revitalization in the downtown area. You can help us by funding $400, which is Dan Fleishman's estimate of our fee. This fee must accompany the official application for minor modification in the change of use process with the city. Due to changes that go into effect on January 1st, 2020, Marion County has advised us to get our application submitted before the end of this year. Do you have questions, or is my time up?
Time's up. We will talk about this, Wendy.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Good one. Okay. Wow. Russ Stromeyer.
Before I can go to the mic, I have more handouts. 325 West Washington Street, Stateon. And at the last Council meeting four weeks ago, I made a presentation regarding my concern about the sidewalk maintenance program. And I feel like nothing was of concern to the Council in any of the items that I brought up. Now, I invited every one of you to come over and walk my sidewalks. How many did, besides Hank? Did you?
Yep.
I was hoping you'd come talk to me and show me where you felt my hazards were on my sidewalk. Now, I had a nice conversation with Keith today, and he explained, you know, ADA rules and this and that, which, you know, I do understand, and that is important. But just by the example that unfortunately Janet Rutgers gave tonight, why are we focusing on half-inch gaps, quarter-inch rises, when there are so many more hazardous areas, not just the city sidewalks, which, by the way, as I mentioned last time, there are many, but also around town? You know, the city has enforcement, you know, driving around in the truck code enforcement. They can spot things like that. The water meters or readers are out there all the time. They could spot things like that. Why doesn't the city focus on what is truly a hazard before we have more injuries like Janet's? And if you'll take a look at these photographs, one thing of note to Lance is the one on the lower left. I brought up last time that there are new concrete pores that have half-inch gaps. And Lance said, "I'd like to see it." There it is, Lance. That's on Shaft Road in front of the middle school. That's a half-inch gap. And according to the code, those need to be fixed. But yet, they were approved by the city. What about the one on the right? That's the city water meter. I took that tonight with a level. It's almost a half-inch rise. According to the code, there shouldn't be more than a quarter-inch rise. That's the city's water meters. Those are all over town for people to trip on. You know? Why don't we focus on what's really important and deal with the real hazards in the city? Then the other two examples, of course, you know, like, for instance, what Janet tripped on that's being left untouched. The one on the upper left, the police department, that's right out in front of there, but Keith assured me that that was going to be addressed. But I mean, it's ridiculous, guys. Are you that out of touch that you're not worried about the safety of the citizens and instead are giving money away in a grant for neighborhood beautification that came out of the general fund? And again, Keith explained, "Well, we can't do much with that, but hey, let's do something with it." So, you're not concerned about citizen safety, but let's paint a park bench. That's what it seems like. I understand my time's up. I would really like to talk to you guys more about this later. I'm not letting go of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Want a little joy? Your time is ticking, by the way.
We need that right now.
I guess you do. Kerry Sessoms, 1501 East Burnett and Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third. So, yes, I came to thank the city and the State and Police Department for their huge amount of help for community dinner. This year, they delivered, along with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, over 697 meals to people in our community. And we served roughly 800 and something in the dining room that evening. It was an amazing event with all people. It was probably our busiest year in the dining room. It was full the entire time. I could, like, have a little tear about that. But there were... Nobody was on their phones. It was people just interacting with all people. So, I'm just very grateful that the city and our local police department is so helpful with this because we really couldn't do it without all of your help. So, Hank, you got your meal?
We did, and Sandy and I both thought it was a wonderful meal.
Good.
Couple of the home-delivered ones. The chief brought them over.
Oh, you got lucky.
And we got to meet his...
You got the king. The king, serving the king.
We got to meet his wife, and we had...
She was very nice.
So, that was fun.
I also want to publicly thank all of the volunteers that signed up for help. We had over 80 volunteers that came and helped us flip our restaurant into a madhouse. Steve was there. It was crazy time, for sure. And then, I just wanted to share really quickly a little story of a young couple of boys that showed up at the end of the evening, and they were clothed quite heavily. They'd rode their bikes down, and they were sitting there, and a lady in a red shirt kept bringing homeless people in. She was driving around and finding them and bringing them in to eat. And they sat down next to these two boys, and the long story short is, those boys ate until they couldn't eat anymore. They asked if they could take a plate home to their mom. So, of course, I packed up enough food for multiple days of turkey dinner. And to the little lady that kept bringing in these homeless folks, or this last couple that I spoke with slept... They were sleeping in their car. And he was so grateful for that meal. When he reached his hand out to shake my hand, and you know, his hands were just black, and I just held his hand. And he was just so happy to have someone touch him and treat him like he was just as good as anybody else in the restaurant. So, I'm just super grateful to have the opportunity to be able to do that for our city. We were also on the news, I have to say. Amy Fraser came down. We looked good. Stateon looked good. We were all good, and so...
And it hit Google.
Oh, good. Yay, I looked great, yeah. However, I just wanted to say I'm really proud to expose our city in a super positive way on a national level. National. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay. And that's it on the public comments so far tonight. There'll be another opportunity toward the end of the meeting on the consent agenda for November 4th. It's been a month since we met, so City Council minutes, collective bargaining agreement with the State and Police Officers Association, and the annual TMDL report.
Mr. Mayor?
So, what would you folks like to do with this, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we have a correction? Because on the agenda, it says that there isn't another public comment that's just, like, open other than during the award of the contract for the Jordan Bridge Maintenance Project. So, if people do have something to say, then perhaps they should say things now. I don't see anything else other than under the general business.
Well, normally, we have two sets of public comments. We haven't for a while.
Mr. Mayor, we changed it.
We changed it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't do that. So, now or never? Okay. Thank you, Counselors. We'll get this sorted out eventually, I guess. Consent agenda. Take a look at that. What would you folks like to do with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to... Hmm.
As presented.
Approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Counselor. And a second? And would all in favor, please, say aye on that?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Oppose, same sign. And the consent agenda's approved. There's no public hearings tonight. There are no public hearings. Under general business, award of contract for the 219... 2019, excuse me, Jordan Bridge Maintenance Project. Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is a staff report regarding the award contract of 2019 Jordan Bridge Maintenance Project. Before I get to that, I'd like to go through a quick slide presentation on where we are and how we got there and what we're looking towards in the next year, with your approval, of course. So, Jordan Bridge Maintenance Repair Project... So Jordan Bridge Maintenance Repair Project. The original bridge was constructed in 1937 over Thomas Creek near Lyons. In 86, Lynn County replaced that bridge.
Closer to Simon.
And the Jordan Bridge was dismantled and rebuilt by volunteers here in Stateon over the Salem Ditch, and opened as pedestrian traffic in 88. In 94, some of our famous vandals broke Christmas lights installed on the bridge, and they caught fire, and damage was beyond the repair of the bridge. So local residents and the city hired boatwright engineering to design a similar bridge, and it was constructed and opened in 1988. 98, excuse me. Tough to see this without lights.
21 years ago.
I got it. The Jordan Bridge uses, provides pedestrian access over the Salem Ditch to access Wilderness Park. It is one of the centerpieces of Pioneer Park, if not the centerpiece. It's often used for photo shoots, senior photos, family photos, et cetera. It's rented out for events such as weddings, family reunions, birthday parties. And you can see, our current rates are $100 for the first three hours, 20 for each additional hour. In 2014, the city hired McGee Engineering from Corvallis to perform a full inspection of that bridge. The inspection focused on the structural elements of the bridge primarily. And several deficiencies were found. Water had broke through seals and accelerated decay of floor beams across members and blocking. This is some of the things that they had found during their inspection. Floor beams, the cord, the trusses, and that was back in 2014. Repair work completed in 2014. July, August, Oregon Woods, Inc., replaced all the floor beams. In 2016, Oregon Woods came back and replaced one set of rotting crossbeams. The floor beams were replaced with I-beams that are still more suitable for outdoor conditions. Blocking repair was also completed in the areas of severe rot, and we replaced the crossbeams. You can see here, this is the floor joists going across. It's now a nice steel I-beam, probably overdesigned for what its need is, but that bad boy's not going anywhere for the near future. You can see the crossmembers here. This was one that was replaced in 2016. You can see the rot, the decay. They replaced two here. And when they were doing so, they found some blocking that is underneath these crossmembers, and they pretty much hold those crossmembers in place from the bottom. And they were severe rot in that blocking. And so the city, the city council at that time, they started putting money towards the Jordan Bridge. They decided to do it, and they budgeted $100,000 for repairs for the Jordan Bridge. And in 2017, we, the Public Works Department, went out to bid for, twice. And we didn't receive any bids, not one bid at both times. And Public Works did not budget any funds in 2019 at our Budget Committee. We had two council members request that that money be put back in, and requested staff to continue to find a contractor to make those repairs. Fortunately, we pointed out with a request for proposals on October 2nd, there was a bid opening on October 30th. The Public Works Department was very proactive this time around. We worked with Lynn County and Marion County and another two cities that had covered bridges recently rehabbed and modified. We spoke and communicated to the project engineers and their managers. We actually reached out to several of the contractors that bid on those projects, sent them invites to our project. And then on October 30th, we had, I believe it was five, I don't have it in front of me currently, five or six bids that came in for this project. And the low bid, ironically enough, was Oregon Woods, who did the work in 2014 and 2016, at $129,000 to do the remainder of the repairs, complete routine maintenance on the roof, and paint the entire structure. So that wasn't something that we had forecasted originally, but we received calls probably in the summertime on a daily, or several times a week, I'll say, people wanting to rent it, but it's just so old and dirty and tired that they choose not to. So we've had a lot of comments about, "Well, why don't you go paint the thing? It's been 20 years." So that's part of the project. We're going to repaint it, we're going to do a makeover, if you will, on it, and that'll start in January, with your guys' blessing, of course. Before we get to the staff report, or is there any questions or a discussion that you guys want to have with myself before I get to the staff report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Lance, I want to thank you so much for going and specifically finding people that have worked on covered bridges. I know that I was quite passionate about it in the Budget Committee meeting, so thank you for listening and for doing such a great job of getting multiple bids, so that we can fix a rickety old staple in our town.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Lance, one of the questions has probably been, you know, this thing is only 20 years old, and it was built out of brand-new wood in the summer of 1998. I think it took us 16 or 17 weekends to build it. It just doesn't, and you know, roofed over like the originals were to keep the weather out. It just doesn't, it hasn't seemed possible that it could deteriorate that much in 20 years, but it has. And at the same time, one of the possible answers to that was that it was built in the wrong place, or the orientation was wrong, that it was too much exposure on that southwest face, which lets all that rain run in. If you go out and look at the original bridge, or where the original was, it's a cement span now that Lynn County put across Jordan Creek, it's the same orientation. The thing faces, or the side sort of faces to the southwest. And so that bridge, and probably others with that same orientation, would get that same, that weathering effect. But this one just seems to have, it just seems beyond reason that it should have deteriorated the way it has. And I don't have any answers, just a comment.
I can't tell you if they reused some of the members, burnt down in 88? I don't know what they replaced.
No, they didn't.
What they kept. But one thing I'll say, it's like down at the coast, things aren't built for exterior use down at the coast, if it's not cedar, because cedar will last if you treat it. Well, none of that's cedar, it's just duck fur, right? And it's not maintained. Probably needed to be painted 10 years ago, and then repainted five years after that, because it's open to the elements. The flashing is very poor, so water gets down into the cracks, and sun doesn't get to it, so it just sits there and rots and rots and rots. So you get what you pay for, and fortunately, the city didn't invest any money at that time in the maintenance of it, you know, annual upkeep, semi-annual upkeep, every five years upkeep. And so we are where we're at today because of that.
Well, the councillor isn't the only one passionate about that. I helped build it that summer. And yeah, that's a prize. Okay, other comments and thoughts here, please?
If you'd like, I'd like to move forward with the staff report, and the council can vote on whether or not they want to award that contract.
Okay. Is there any other public comment before we do that? Not just, not just me?
It's the bridge.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Carrie.
Just regarding that, since you mentioned that there was no preventative maintenance and things like that done, has anybody made a plan going forward from now to do that kind of maintenance, repainting, whatever's going to be needed to...
Yes. Going forward with assets, we want to have a funding stream or maintenance stream, something where we're showing the lifespan of that and continue to maintain. It's something we're working on a lot of projects, but yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, Russ?
I hate to keep harping on this, but, and I think you did mention last time, the deck will be redone, so that we don't have half-inch gaps and quarter-inch rises in all those boards?
No, I didn't mention that at all, Russ.
I thought somebody mentioned it at the last meeting. So I assume that will be taken care of, otherwise it'll be unsafe and hazardous to anyone that walks across that bridge. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Russ. All right. Other thoughts and comments? Council of liberation, then, please.
Mr. Mayor? Can I go forward with the staff report?
Yes, you may, absolutely, yes. Staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At issue this evening is the acceptance of the bid and award of the contract for the Jordan Bridge repairs and maintenance to Oregon Woods, Inc., in the amount of $129,000. I won't go through the background information, because I just presented that to you. You can see, we received five bids. The low bid was Oregon Woods, Inc., at $129,000. There's a fairly decent range there, and then our friends to the south here, right outside Stateon, Oregon State Bridge, bid at $329,000. So going local sometimes isn't everything. So in reviewing this, staff reviewed the low bid and recommends the city award the contract to Oregon Woods, Inc. at this time.
Okay, all right. Now council of liberation. Go ahead. Anyone, everyone. Lance, quick question. I don't know this for a fact, but I understand that Lynn County has had a group, maybe it's these Oregon Woods that does this, that have literally dismantled other covered bridges in the county and rebuilt them, I mean, as necessary.
I don't know if Oregon Woods has or not. They have a pretty extensive resume, though, with covered bridges. And I would suggest that when they start work here in January, you go out and watch them, because they use a lot of old-fashioned mechanics to do that. They're not crane and things like that, use a lot of block and tackle, just very primitive engineering, mechanics-type things, so it's kind of fascinating, and I would suggest you go out and watch them at work, they're experts.
Sort of like we did it the first time. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So Lance, this doesn't specifically, it talks about some specifics, but then it doesn't. It says, "And the performance of additional and incidental work is called for in the plans." Are there deckboards that have been seen or flagged as concerns that could be taken care of?
No. And I believe I, I thought I had this in here, the actual, what they would be doing, but apparently it's not in here. But no, that's not, we're not replacing any of the deckboards. No, we have the pedestrian bridge that we got an award from the state. I think I got that grant in 2015, and we constructed a ADA pathway from the park over the new pedestrian bridge that comes around over to Wilderness Park now. So we have ADA access. What Russ is talking about, that may be, I haven't gone out there and measured each gap, but there is an ADA pathway. Currently, we had to do it in order to get that grant, so that's what we'll say. We're not, we don't plan to replace it.
So is that what the state requires, is that we have some sort of ADA access?
In order for me to get that, or for the city to get that grant for the pedestrian bridge that was constructed, yes.
Okay. Other questions, thoughts?
Lance, real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was here when we talked about the RFP the last time that it went out, and that there was no respondees. And maybe you mentioned it, and I missed it, but what was the secret sauce this time that we were able to get more? And were there lessons learned on the build of the RFP? Is it where we posted, or...
I'm going to tell you, again, I've been here just about five years now. It was kind of a learning curve for me, because I'm from, you know, my background's the metropolitan area. When I put something out to bid, whether it's private or public, whatever it is, I usually have a lot of bids coming my way. Stateon's completely opposite. We really have to strive and go out and work to get bids for either proposals for consultant work or contractors. So in the last three years, we've been going and being a little bit proactive. In 2017, we weren't proactive enough. I think I mentioned that this time, we went out and we reached out to different covered bridge projects that have happened in the valley in the last two or three years. We've spoken to those project managers from those counties and cities. We've looked at the companies that bid on those projects. We've contacted them, and we sent the RFPs that we prepared to them and asked them to bid on the project. So we're a little bit more proactive, worse is waiting for bids to come in.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, other questions or thoughts?
I will say, let me just real quick add to that. A lot of times, we don't find that to be the case, but on a specialty project like this, there's not that many contractors going to work on a bridge, covered bridge like this. So you have to be a little bit more proactive. You have to go out and search of contractors, because number one, Stateon isn't downtown Salem or Portland or the metropolitan area. And number two, it's a specialty project. You know, you got to make it worth their while to come here. Fortunately, we found someone out of Eugene that have done work here before, so they know what they're getting into, and they feel comfortable at that price to get the work done.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else? So a council decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I make a motion?
Okay, you may, absolutely.
I move to award the 2019 Jordan Bridge Maintenance Project to Oregon Woods Incorporated in the amount of $129,000.
Okay, thank you.
I will second.
And a second, all right. Any discussion on that, on the motion to approve that bid to Oregon Woods? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, Lance, terrific job on this. I mean, that's a lot of humility to say, "Hey, this is a learning process for me, too, so thank you for going out and doing that, and we get to save our bridge," you know? So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I remember right, and my brain has not been totally on in the last couple of weeks, but did we have only $100,000 set aside in the budget for this? And what are we doing to...
In previous years, we had $100,000 that we had budgeted. We're just going to need to make an adjustment. We talked about that, that budget adjustment, and with the additional funds, we sort of talked about, it was from the facilities maintenance fund is where it's going to come from, so...
Great.
We decided, you know, with that dollar amount, that it was worthy of having that conversation and doing this. So this will be the first step in doing that, and then there'll be an adjustment probably coming, budget adjustment, as we get closer to the project being awarded, but that's part of this whole process.
Great, thank you so much, Keith.
Can we do a voice vote on this? If so, all in favor of the proposal to spend $129,000 to refurbish the Jordan Bridge? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hearing done, we'll declare that motion passed 4 to 0, and we'll get to work on that. Okay. Thank you, Lance. Next item, potential surplus city-owned property. That'd be you.
That'd be me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall that in early October, staff presented to you our inventory of city-owned property. In total, there's about 55 tax parcels that the city owns. And at that time, we said that there were a number of them that are not used by the city, and that the staff didn't really envision that there was a future use for. And the council asked us to return to you with identifying what property could be declared as surplus and perhaps disposed of, that there was no reason for the city to continue to own. So the city manager, the director of Public Works, and I looked at six tax parcels that I had preliminarily identified... I had preliminarily identified as being potentially surplus, and after, and we got in the car and drove around and actually looked at them in addition to looking at them on the map. And after doing that, we really, we came down with just two parcels of land that the city owns that we think, that we have not identified any potential future use for, and think that the city could declare them to be surplus. The first is a tax parcel at the south end of North Oak Ave. It's shown here, just able to show you sort of the neighborhood that it sits in, the fire station is here. This is the fire district's training and exercise yard that's on land owned by NORPAK. Here's a close-up view. The parcel itself is 35 feet wide, and I think it's 100 and, yeah, 36 feet wide by 125 feet deep. The city obtained it in 1989 from Marion County, presumably it was tax-acquired property at that time, and according to Marion County Assessor's Office, its real market value is about $4,500. The second parcel is on north, at the south end of North Birch Ave. Again, a shot to be able to show you sort of where it sits, a close-up view, and it is about 20 feet wide and 55 feet long. In doing some research, I found a letter or memo from the, I think, mid-eighties that said that in 1979, the city obtained this little bit of land for future extension of North Birch Ave. It's now been 30-plus years, and there's been no motion to extend North Birch Ave to the south, and no reason to continue to hold on to this piece of property. So those are the two parcels that, should the council think we should, we could declare as surplus, as I said in the written staff report. We need to consult with the city attorney exactly what that means. We've started that process. His advice was if the council wants to go ahead with declaring the surplus, that we will return to you at a future meeting with a resolution that does so, and then we will go through the process of offering them to the public to obtain.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. If you've got any questions, we will answer them. I provided you with some motions to declare either both or either one of the properties as surplus or to not, and should you do so, we will then return with a resolution to formally do what you asked us to do tonight.
Okay, thank you. There any public comment on that staff report? Thoughts about that? 1,000 square feet? Wendy, yes.
Since you invited, comment. Wendy Stone, 525 North Myrtle here in Staton. Just a suggestion for your future consideration, because there are houses near both of those lots, it appears, at least the second one, I know, I kind of missed the first one, suggests that you go to the homeowners nearby and see if they are interested, because they would probably have more at stake to own a piece of property next to theirs than someone from, say, Eugene or Portland. Just a thought.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Other thoughts? Other public comment? No? That's a good one. Yes?
Dr. Jett? Yeah. James Taylor, let's see if I get the address right, 41114 State and Style Road. I was involved in a buyout through the city of Salem one time on property I owned. My question would be is, when the city acquired the one on Birch, was that bought from the property owner or acquired somehow through legal means from the property owner? Maybe research back through and find out how that was acquired, and whoever had that land originally, get them first dibs to have their land back.
Okay.
That's all I'd like to say on that.
Thank you, James. Dan, Mr. Fleischman, didn't you kind of suggest that these were probably what, some kind of tax foreclosure? Did you suggest that, or am I making that up?
The North Oak Ave property, the city obtained from Marion County. That would lead me to conclude that it was probably tax-foreclosed property. The North Birch Ave piece was not obtained from Marion County. I don't have the information in front of me of who the city bought it from, but again, there was a memo in the file from five to seven years after we obtained it that was explaining that we had bought it for future extension of the road.
Okay.
So here it is, 40 years later, and nobody's thinking of extending the road anymore.
Okay. Okay. Other thoughts or questions? Public comment? Council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this? There's several possibilities. I think Dan's suggesting, I don't want to put words in your mouth anymore tonight, but is suggesting we direct staff to initiate the process to declare both of these, or one of them, or neither of them, as surplus. What would you folks like to do?
If there's no deliberation, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's a long one. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to direct staff to initiate the process to declare both properties as surplus.
Second.
That wasn't bad at all.
I was thinking I was gonna have to read the lot first. I'm glad that it had a period there. Yes, I'm disappointed, too.
I was rooting for it.
I was braced for something else. Okay, I've got a motion and a second to direct staff to initiate the process to declare both properties as surplus, both on, one on North Birch Avenue and one on North Oak Avenue. Okay, a motion and a second. Do we need to hold a group on this, Dan? Anybody? Legal beagles? Let's go ahead. Is there any other discussion on this? Let's go ahead on that. Hold a council, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you had one, all right, go ahead.
I would just be, I guess, interested in, I'm not familiar with, like, the first property all about, even though we have the maps up there and everything. It would be interesting to know what we could even do with something like that, that type of property. Something that one of the people, Mr. Taylor, is that your name? It just resonated with me what he said about giving our land back to the original people. And it just sparked the thought of, you know, what can we do culturally? If one of these spots isn't a good place, what can we do culturally to commemorate, you know, the first people of Oregon? So, I don't know. I just think we might be able to do some other things to it, and it just sparked a thought. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, pull a council on this, please.
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Oritt?
Yes.
Motion passed, four to zero.
Four to zero on that, thank you. And communications from mayor and councillors. Gosh, I don't have anything else tonight.
I've got some, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
First, I wanted to thank Carrie for the community dinner. I went down there on Wednesday with my kids, and while they didn't eat very much of the food, sorry about that, they love the rolls. But I took their leftovers back to my husband, and we enjoyed them also. Thank you very much, and for what you do for our community, we appreciate, we all appreciate it. Thank you. And I also wanted to let everyone know about our chat with the councillor, Snow Peak Brewery, this Saturday on the 7th from 12 to 2:00 p.m. So be there hanging out, come see us, and we'd love to hear from you.
Counselor, is that place accessible for those of us that don't get around as well as we'd like?
Yeah.
Yeah, no stairs.
Yeah, there's no stairs.
You get in there, right?
There's fairly wide.
Well, I know, the lift-up doors, but is it...
Paths. No.
I thought it was all benches in front of it, in front of those roll-up doors.
No, you'll be able to get in, there's just a regular door, you'll be able to get in there.
I think I might invite myself, if that's okay.
More than welcome, come on down.
All right. I just wish...
Awesome.
Okay, go ahead. Counselor, you were...
And I just wanted to make a comment about the sidewalk program. You know, it's not something that we can have our eyes on the entire city, and I'm sure, like, I live on a road specifically that isn't in the best shape, and I would love for us to be able to wave a magic wand and for everything to be fixed all at once, but that's not how life works. And so we're doing things in stages, and one of the things that was brought up the last time about the sidewalk program is why we chose, or how we chose the grids that we chose. And Lance brought up the point that we're trying to start with the walking paths for the kids to go to school. And so, you know, in thinking about these things, while one portion might not be as bad as the other, that doesn't mean that it's not bad at all. So, you know, we're, it's not perfect, but we're trying. And so I just wanted to put that out there, and thank you to Lance and Dan and the rest of the staff for what you guys do, and gals as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other councillor communications?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
To follow up on what Counselor Oritt was saying, I would like to thank Mr. Strohmeyer for bringing our attention to this stuff, and for everyone that's here. I am so impressed by how many people come to council meetings now. It's so awesome. Your voice only gets heard if you squeak. So, like, I appreciate that so much, and it does make me think more about our process, and I do hope that we can come up with a way that we can not only start working on these paths that, you know, the kids are walking to school on, but also maybe looking at another way that we can grade how important a fix is, so that maybe we're tackling it from different angles at the same time. Mr. Strohmeyer really did make, did make me think with these pictures that he's brought in these last two meetings, that there are more hazardous parts of our town that maybe should have more thought to them. And the same with the people with the trees, that said that the tree fell. I would love to know kind of what is our process and our response to a tree that goes down, even if it's on someone's land, but they don't have the means to get that tree fixed or get that sidewalk fixed. And I know that we do have a lot of help at the city for the sidewalk portion, because Lance explained that really well last time, but it's just nice to know, like, when they say, you know, it's a wetland area, you know, what are your rights? And how can we figure out what can we touch, what can we not? What are we gonna get in trouble for? A lot of people operate fear-based, and so they don't want to get in trouble, and, but they do want to help, and they do want to, like, they want to help their neighbor and get the tree down. But I guess it would just be nice to remember that, like, when the public is asking questions, let's have a kind reception of those questions and those comments, because it takes a lot out of someone's night to come down here and talk about issues that they're having and the frustrations that they're having. People don't come down to council meetings just because it's super, super fun. Yeah. It can be fun, but anyway, I just, I appreciate what everyone does here. I appreciate the city staff, I appreciate the councillors that are here, and the mayor, and I appreciate all of you guys for being here, because this is how we get stuff done. Like, I look at the covered bridge, you know, getting the funding that it needs, and I just, it makes me smile to know that we are getting some things done, and maybe, maybe they're not going as fast as I wish that they could go, but thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Others? Thoughts?
Well said.
Communications from city staff, Keith?
I don't have anything, I don't know if anybody else does staff. I'm all saying no, so I think we're good.
Okay. Future agenda items are an audit report, a public hearing on land use code amendments, emergency management equipment update, facilities RFP update, sewer maintenance contract, and that's about it.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, one more thing, I don't, I don't think we made it very clear, when is Mr. McDonald going to be sworn in?
As I understand from staff, first of the year.
Okay. I didn't know if we made that public, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, that's why I said the staff will kind of take care of getting him.
I know, but we didn't specifically tell the audience when that would be, that's all.
YouTube viewers could be really eager for that information.
Yeah.
It will happen, all in good time. We'll get him...
So you said the first, the first meeting?
Yes.
Why does that open?
We'll have to get him all squared. I thought I, I thought I said enough about that, that it was sort of clear, maybe not, but that's fine. No, we're good, we're good, we'll get him, we'll get him in here. Judy?
That's right.
What's that? Do you have something else?
No.
What?
Judy, I'm sorry, we...
I can't let anybody else talk.
Mr. Mayor, this is the council rules that we had said.
Then we have to let, if we do for one, we have to do for all.
There's no discretion? None? Zero?
That's okay.
Okay.
We'd love to hear from you afterwards, so...
It's getting dark earlier, be safe out there. Let's go home.